So, thank you. We have Tracy, we have Caterie, we have Zeta, Chris Signoli, Ciara Hanlon, are you on the finance team?
Yes, I'm a budget analyst.
All right, great. Thank you, Ciara. Counselor Cliff Bruce, Jesse Letterman, our president, Lindsay, Deputy Cafo, TJ the Cafo, Tracy and Victor Davila. That's as many as I see. Is there anyone on here that I can't, that I didn't mention?
Uh-uh.
Okay, then moving along. So why don't we start it with TJ? I know he's spoken to the mayor and I talked to TJ this morning to talk about, you know, how this meeting would go. And TJ, why don't you make your opening statements about your conversations, et cetera?
Sure. Uh, thank you. So I had a conversation with the mayor, uh, both after Monday night's meeting and then again uh, this afternoon, and he has reiterated that these are the right financial moves to go to stabilization reserve with the seventeen and a half, the five million for uh, use of free cash for property tax relief, the two and a half for roads and sidewalks, and then the three million for neighborhoods. He feels this is a well-balanced approach to what the, what he's heard and what the council has asked for and needs. Uh, he is not opposed to looking at other um, free cash for FY twenty-three to add to that um, number of seven million to get it to a different number. He is, he is not opposed to that, but he doesn't wanna uh, make that move now. He wants to have the summer to look at the values, the economy, all those different things that um, you know, will play into whether or not uh, we have more than seven million to offset uh, property taxes. Um, the, the big piece that I push that I wanna kinda make uh, as Cafo is to, is to move the money to stabilization reserve, so it's safe and it's in our reserves as opposed to having any little risk that uh, if we don't move the money, then it goes back to the free cash process uh, that DOR has. And if we have any type of negative accounts due to delayed reimbursement from the federal or state government, which you've had in the past, it does impact free cash. Uh, and I can send you a one pager from DOR that kind of explains um, all the kind of their process as written by them. Um, so that's kind of my pitch is to, I, I know the conversation stemmed a lot Monday night on property tax relief. I did, you know, convey that to the mayor, uh, both Tuesday morning and again this afternoon. And again, he said he's open to having further conversations, just not with this pot of money right now.
And why wouldn't we potentially, you know, it's earliest we would potentially have uh, a new free cash number for this fiscal year?
So normally it comes out around uh, November time when we get ready to start setting the tax rate. Uh, that we actually ask DOR to uh, expedite or prioritize us if we think we're gonna use free cash to set our tax rate, and then we'll ask them to put us in the queue earlier, so we have it and we know what it is, so we can strategize.
So November, okay. Um, all right. Anybody else wanna make any opening statement? Um, Lindsay, you wanna supplement what TJ said, or anybody else having an opening statement they would like to make?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right. So that being said, we have uh,
Tracy has her name up.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, Tracy, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Tracy.
No problem. Thank you, Tim. Um, TJ, wait, it was something that I was confused about, but um, I can't remember what it is right now. So there was something else that came up last night when we were at the DOJ meeting, and we were talking about um, um, the police commission and giving them a budget. And I was wondering, since it hasn't been budgeted um, already, will we be able to use some free cash to maybe give them um, some type of budget um, for the police commission? Because through, when the DOJ was there, they said in the um, consent decree, it's the finance department's um, role to um, give a budget to the police commission. And they didn't realize that it was budget time right now, and the time is now for that to get done. So I don't know what the conversations have been about um, the police commission, but is that an opportunity to use maybe five hundred thousand or something to give the um, police commission a budget?
So my, so I haven't seen any formal requests about what the needs of the police commission are. I know I've heard from a number of city councilors and others in the public about um, that they need certain things and, and I so I don't know what that looks like, but my, my immediate um, gut reaction is to utilize reserve for contingency or uh, some other supplemental funding source, once we have a chance to get the requests and vet them and kinda go through uh, what they are. Uh, and then I have no problem even utilizing the current appropriation in the police department um, to start looking at, you know, taking it from their OTPS depending on what it is. Um, so I'd like to see a, like a formal budget request before I commit to anything beyond that, but I, you know, if they're legitimate needs, I have no problem just even, like I said, utilizing the police department's budget and then having the conversation of the merits of a, of a overall with an overall budget appropriation for the commission itself. Um, you know, that is not something I've been part of that debate, but I'm happy to be part of it.
So are you on the DOJ committee?
I am not.
Okay, cuz when, when they were reading it to us, it looks like it was um, the police department's responsibility to help the police commission create a budget. Now, I don't know everybody's um, expertise on the police commission, but I don't even know if they know how to build budgets yet. I don't know.
I would expect them to build it. I'd expect them just to kinda more or less send me a list of what it is.
But would you sit with them to help them like, think it through? Because they may not even know everything that they need. They think they may just need a laptop and some space, um, but with all considerations, like you're a budget expert, like.
Yeah, I have no, I have no problem doing that.
Would you be willing to sit with them and think it through? Because it's in the consent decree, like, it's part of what we have to do. It's not like uh, we can't bu- um, build a budget for them. We have to, we have to. And, and I think that um, the lady, the consultant
I see.
is going to um, probably be reaching out to you and the folks from DOJ. It's probably, cuz you're still over the police department's finance?
Yeah, I'm still, yeah, I'm still helping out there. So I have no problem having a conversation.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you were on that committee with them, because they read it out loud, um.
Yeah, no, I wasn't on the committee and then uh, I'll have a little bit of a conversation.
All right, that's um.
Because it's our.
Thanks, Tracy. So Tracy.
No, Tim, no, 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 no. You don't know if that's my final question, and you don't get to cut me off because you talk for as long as you do. And I think that that's disrespectful. And if you wanna talk about respect, then you could say, one more question is, no, not thank you, Tracy. I don't like that. I think that sometimes you can be condescending and rude, but because you say it in a calm voice, um, you think it's not picked up, but it is, and that's not gonna happen with me. So please don't do that to me. Please don't do that to me. But I'm going to yield, because I don't wanna say anything else that I might regret later, but please don't do that to me. I never do that to you, and you can be long-winded. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thanks for your comments. Um, what I was gonna say is that we were starting to have a conversation back and forth. And normally in committee meetings, we, we go through the chair. So um, and TJ and Tracy, you were kind of going back and forth and, and I mean.
Oh, you called me through the chair. You called me, and I was asking TJ the questions that I had for TJ. It wasn't a, I didn't disrespect you. I didn't jump in. You called on me, and I was asking what I had to ask, Tim.
No, no, that, that's fine. I'm just trying to make the meeting as orderly as we can, and it just, that's the comment I made at the beginning. And it was just, my sense is it was starting to, to become a conversation between two people instead of the normal way a committee meeting is run. So it's just my perception. I'm just trying to, so I made the comments at the beginning that there's emotions in this, and we've gotta do everything we can to, to respect the process that we have in the city council. So I'm not trying to stop you from talking. I'm just saying that um, that, that's normally how we do it in a meeting.
That's exactly what you did. And there is um, a process in city council, and I was respecting it. I raised my hand. Somebody else put it back down. I raised it again. I waited for you to call on me, and I was asking the questions that I had about free cash. This meeting is about free cash, isn't it? I wasn't putting anything out of order, Tim, and I was being very respectful to what you were saying.
Okay.
But I just, we'll move on.
There are two other people with their hands up, Zeta and Victor. Uh, I'll just go in the order. I'm not sure who added up first. But Zeta, uh, why don't we give you the floor?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I guess the question I had, um, I think uh, TJ alluded to an, uh, more free cash that might be available in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Is that correct?
That is correct. We normally uh, generate between seven and twelve million dollars in free cash uh, each year. Obviously, this year was an anomaly with the uh, ever-source money. Uh, but yeah, normally it's that, and that's where we start the conversation for setting the tax rate next year, for this year's tax rate.
Okay, because I know that um, you know, according to the budget that was presented to us um, next year, there's probably definitely going to be um, property tax increase. And not to belabor the point of property tax relief, um, I'm gonna make this comment, and this might be the last comment I make this, at this meeting about it, um, about having a possibly a law that whenever we have free cash like that, especially an anomaly year like that, if we could have it be um, set so that, say, for example, twenty-five percent of it will go right back to the property taxpayers who created the free cash in the first place. Um, so that was my comment on that. And I guess there's nothing, like was said earlier, that we can do about it this year with these ordinances before us. Um, but I'm really glad that Council Whitfield brought up the police commission, because you know, the police commission, we know that, you know, um, it's new to us here, um, and that the people, the board, uh, the commissioners um, aren't necessarily aware of what it is that they need. I know that um, when I was speaking to the, the chair before, you know, he was saying some things that he needed, but he didn't know where it was that he needed to go to get the supplies that he needed, and he um, um, you know, I don't know if they need office space. So I would really love to see the Board of Comis-, uh, Police Commissioners funded. Um, and I don't know if we're gonna do that today with what we have or with um, other free cash that's available. Or it should be a budget item on the police department, because it is, like you said, part of the police department. Um, so I don't know if that's a question, but I just appreciate that Council Whitfield brought that up, and we need to really look closely at that, because like she said, the Department of, Department of Justice, the consent decree, all of that requires that the Board of Police Commissioner is running. And the only way that we can have a department like that running is for it to be funded. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thanks, Zeta. Um, my own comment on that before I call on Victor and, and uh, Caterie for next, um, is that who is the person that we should, this, this conversation has been we, I heard it a week ago, and it doesn't sound like any progress has been made in terms of a list of items going to TJ or TJ knowing who to call or whatever. Does anybody, Tracy or uh, Zeta, just let us know now? You know, who would you reach out to? Who, who would be the right person? Is it Norman or Aldon or?
Probably the chair, yeah.
Because maybe they don't even know that it's budget process right now. Maybe they don't even know to submit anything right now. Maybe they don't even know to sit with the finance.
If I might interject, uh, Mr. Chair, I actually think it would make sense for me and Norm to connect and just to have a dialogue about just what he's hearing and then start the process of just vetting out kinda what makes sense and how do you, if it makes sense, how do you implement?
Yeah, can you take that one as an action item, TJ?
Sure.
Yeah. All right, great. Thank you. Um, all right, uh, people in the queue, I think Victor was next. And after that, Caterie and Justin. Go ahead, Victor.
Uh, thank you, Tim. Uh, good afternoon. TJ, good afternoon. Uh, TJ, um, I do have a plethora of questions, but as has been stated, uh, they wanna keep the meeting to an hour. Uh, so we tried to be quick with my questions, uh, but do know that if I don't, if I don't understand something, I'm gonna vote against it. Uh, so TJ, so seventy million dollars, uh, can you give me the breakdown again? That's gonna be five million dollars that was property tax relief?
So we have roughly twenty-eight million left of the uh, funding that's certified after what we spent it on. And seventeen and a half is going to stabilization reserve, five million for additional property tax reliefs, three million for neighborhood enhancements, and two and a half millions for roads and sidewalks.
Okay, so the amount, it's five million dollars for, for tax relief?
It's seven total, but five million from free cash, yes.
I'm sorry, seven total, five million for free cash, and the other two million?
It's from the Treasury uh, notes investment that we did.
Okay, uh, Treasury, yes. Oh, thank you, TJ. Uh, can you tell me, is that all that was yield by those, by those T-bills, the two, two million?
Yeah, so it's about roughly eleven-month investment that um, will yield just around five percent return on investment. We set aside forty-five million dollars to invest, and that's gonna have two, just over two million, two million thirty thousand dollars available for the stated purpose of property tax relief.
So we haven't got the forty-five million dollars yet? That's still.
No, no, no. We, we, we used that forty-five million, and we put it in a different investment vehicle to yield a return on investment of two million dollars.
So the total that we have available to spend right now for the investment from the T-bills is two millions? Is there any more?
It will be, it will be two million in November to put towards debt property tax relief. We have the forty-five million. We never lost the forty-five million. If we need to get it back, we can take it out. Uh, and if we, for the sake, you know, crisis hits and we need to get twenty-five million and we don't have it, then, you know, we can get it and use it and just not really, we just won't realize the full two million. So that sits in our account. It's just accruing interest in a different investment vehicle.
I see. Now TJ, you told me, you, well, you said to the, to the, to the, uh, to the committee, you spoke to the mayor already a couple of times. The mayor finds the schedule correctly, he's like, he does every year. He's pretty steadfast that this is it, this is the, the the Lord, the word of the mayor, uh, and this is how it's gonna be. Um, so are you, did I correctly that he's willing to look over the summer with further tax relief, but that's gonna be for fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
No, so he's gonna, so right now, we're, we're asking you to adopt the fiscal twenty, uh, four budget, and we're gonna set tax rate for fiscal twenty-four in November. What he's saying is I have seven million on the table, and I'm willing to talk about additional stuff when I see what happens with the economy, the housing market, uh, all those different factors that go into it. How much are we generating free cash? You know, is it a good year where it's twelve or thirteen million? Is there one that's a little more lean where it's seven or eight million? So he's looking, must look at all that and then have a conversation with the council about um, adding more to that to, to get to a higher number than seven.
Right, so that amount that he's willing to look at down the road, is that gonna be specifically for fiscal twenty twenty-four?
Correct.
Okay, so he's basically gonna ask me was to, to take his word and trust him?
Uh, if he wants to take a wait-and-see approach to see how things shape up. And if we're heading into a recession, he might make different, just different recommendations and decisions. If we're still holding on to that recession, because it's you know, we're just not in it quite yet, then that might have a different, uh, different conversation at that time.
And all this time. Right, TJ.
As well have more information from the Board of Assessors on values. We'll have more information on, on comps that I mean, if you're following the market, there's still, the market's still white-hot. I mean, they don't have a lot of inventory, so they're selling for high prices. Uh, so I wanna get Patrick and his crew in here, uh, his team to kinda, to have a conversation um, as we get through the summer to talk about where we're heading.
Right. I, I, you know, it, it, on its face, what you're saying, uh, what the mayor's proposing, uh, seems sensible to me, however, uh, I, I am concerned, as I said before, TJ. Uh, I think last year, the average ta- property tax increase was two hundred. This year is definitely, might be higher than two hundred dollars uh, due to many factors, including the rising cost of our property values. Um, and so I, I, I just wish to be honest with you. And again, like I said at the chambers last time, it seems to me that we have a, a clash of different sort of thoughts here. And so, uh, I, I think we need tax relief now, significant tax relief, because this is gonna translate to pennies on people's bills, and you know that, I know that, and the council knows, council knows that. Uh, to pennies. And so, um, we need substantial tax relief. Uh, I know last time a comment was made that we never, this is board, that's to the point, the point is that we're doing it now, and the people need to help now. Uh, but my last question, so that I can, um, we can move on, uh, TJ, is uh, you said a seventy million dollar to stabilization fund. If we don't approve it, it's gonna go to free cash, correct?
So that'll be part of next year's free cash fiscal twenty-three's free cash certification process. So instead of certifying ten million, you know, that seventeen million will be looked at by DOR as just free cash, as if it was just for, just for fiscal twenty-three. Um, so they'll look at all of our accounts, judge if we're gonna collect revenue or not collect it, and then make a determination on the amount that um, they determine to be our number.
So could that, could that negatively impact the city with DOR?
So we could, we, we run some risk, and I don't know how big the risk is, but we've had some trouble getting some reimbursements from some federal agencies recently that so, for example, if we don't collect uh, reimbursements on our S R funds, and we've got a lot of money out the door, that's gonna negatively impact fiscal twenty-three's free cash. Now, Pat Burns and I, Pat Roach, and um, our finance team and their finance team are all gonna try to make sure that that doesn't happen. But we fought years to get FEMA money. We fought years to get state nine-one-one money. There's just, sometimes these things just take a little more time. And so I argue just, let's mitigate the risk, move the money so it's not in that process, and then we own it and control it, and then we can get access to it if we need it.
Okay. All right. No, thank you, TJ. Thank you for your explanation. Uh, thank you, Tim. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Victor. Appreciate it. Um, next person in the queue is Caterie Walsh.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that, like my colleagues, I support the funding for the police commission. I'm really kinda surprised that they don't have it already. And that I too, uh, would love to see more tax relief of, because that's what I'm hearing from people constantly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Just for now, okay, thanks.
Watch the time.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Time check. I know you got it three thirty, uh, three o'clock. Uh, we're right at two twenty-nine, two thirty. So next is Counselor Hurst. You have the floor?
Yeah. No, I just wanna echo those same sentiments about the police department. I also would caution TJ, um, I, I, I agree with everyone else, but I'm also a little frustrated that we're not at the point of having a budget now. And of course, like others have said, you're dealing with individuals who may not know to contact you, um, who may not feel comfortable necessarily contacting Cheryl, uh, and it also doesn't make sense for them to contact Cheryl. And you know, the other thing I would caution is that, you know, I would do this in a public meeting, and I, i- if at all possible, in terms of having them making their requests. I know folks feel intimidated, uh, or may feel intimidated, and then I also think that, you know, Norm is running for city council, and so there very well may be a level of conflict of interest there in terms of what Norm wants to see versus what the rest of the commission wants to see for a variety of different reasons. So um, just for me, going to one person doesn't make a lot of sense. The other thing I would do is I would, i- i- if you're going to do that, I would add the compliance evaluator in on the meeting, right? Cuz you need some sort of independent third party. Uh, and then you also need to make sure that Norman has communicated with these other individuals on the commission. And so to not, at the very least, have some level of conversation or use the compliance evaluator as some sort of intermediary, doesn't make sense to me. So I, I, I just, I want you to be thoughtful about what it is that you do before you come to the city council with, you know, um, with either a budget or some request or um, you know, maybe a commitment from the mayor in terms of what he's going to do and how you actually arrived at that. So that, that, that is my piece on the police commission, but it has to get done. Uh, and I didn't realize it was, it was in the, um, the, uh, uh, the consent decree, but it, it also begs the question as to who's monitoring the consent decree, and why don't we know? Uh, cuz that, that, that is even more problematic, not for this meeting. Um, question to you, TJ, uh, forty million dollars, where did that ever-source money go?
Uh, if you bear with me a second, um, Lindsay, can you, let me pull up the, where, when, I can tell you the breakdown where the sixty-eights going.
Oh, was, how much was, how much was from ever-source? That, did that go into like an investment account? Did?
Uh, we put fifteen million into pension reserve. We put six point seven um, million into OPEB. We did about six million for the IBPO uh, retro, did about three million for the firefighters' retro. Um, there was a few other things in there that we had to do, and then that left us with the balance of the twenty-eight million that I'm trying to move before June thirtieth. I can send you, Lindsay, we can send a, Lindsay can send out a breakdown um, to the committee and to the members, just so you guys can see.
Yeah, what do, what do you wanna break down with the free cash, you mean?
A breakdown of the free cash, and then how we spent it so far, that leaves twenty-eight balance, and then the recommendation for these four moves that shows it as a zero balance.
Definitely.
Yeah, that would be good, because the ever-source money is just incorporated into the uh, it, into the free cash, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and what was the total number in free cash that we had to start with?
Seventy-seven point eight million.
And how much of that was ever-sourced?
Forty-one, forty-two million.
And how was ever-sourced? How was that, that really, how was that generated? How did we, is, was that taxpayer dollars that ultimately, um, that, that was used to cover previous budgets in lieu of ever-source not making their payment because they were in litigation?
So I'll definitely defer the detailed answer to Patrick and the Board of Assessors.
Yeah.
Essentially, it's like twenty-five, twenty-eight million of principal that the ever-source owed us?
It's twenty-four point seven of principal and sixteen point four of interest is the breakdown.
Thank you, Lindsay. And that's how we got there to that number of forty-two million.
So Lindsay, can you send that to me? Um, because I, I, that, there is no that money ought to be going to offset taxes, right? Like that money, we paid taxes, or residents have paid taxes as a result of ever-source not committing their fair share to the pot, no? Or is that just the, I, I mean, am I, am I off there? Somebody had to cover the, the, the difference, and them not, no?
And it was the residents.
So we, that, so when we set the tax rate, uh, for, without that revenue in it, uh, there probably a little bit of, of like, just it being spread out from the commercial, residential, and industrial uh, tax rate, but I'll defer that one specifically to uh, the board. The one comment, if I may, is just the forty million dollars, say we use all, all forty over, over the next few years, um, sorry. There we go. Uh, say we use a lot, like, a portion of it. The, the key part that I just wanna caution or educate the council, and I certainly have with the mayor, is when this money ends up being gone, and we tax the full levy of the levy limit, there's gonna be massive tax increases that we're not gonna be able to avoid um, that we're gonna end up having to contend with in three or four or five years. And that, that's the stuff that I try to get out there into the conversation is I know they need, I know they need tax relief, and I understand property tax relief, and I understand the cost, I understand. Uh, but taking our levy down by ten million last year, and taking it down by seven million this year or more, taking it down by a few million the other years, at some point, we're not gonna have that pot of money to help them. And then if we need to fund the services, we're gonna end up having to tax the full levy, and that's gonna be the painful part.
Well, who's to say that that levy's not gonna go down, right? Just naturally based off of um, values? If I'm understanding that correctly, and I may not be understanding.
No, no, that's, that's, we've gone down. During the recession, we've gone down, and we've had to cut the budgets and bring it down, and the tax bills have naturally gone down. And I get the history of the tax bills, because two thousand and eight to two thousand and fifteen, probably, bills actually went down for our residents because values went down.
Got it. So I'd imagine. Okay, so just to conclude, um, cuz I know you wanna move on, um, it, it, work, y- your, your logic in this banks on the taxes continuously going up. And so I, I don't know that I, that I agree with that mindset. Um, and you know, what I do know that we, we know is that taxes and values are increasing for this current year. They're at least staying at the same or increasing, which means that we're going to owe money. Um, that, I mean, taxes are going to go up, and we're putting less into it than we did the previous year. And so right now, folks are going, I mean, we, you can project it. I mean, folks are going to have to pay even more since we put in less. And so I don't quite understand why we would even think about putting. And so I don't quite understand why we would even think about putting in less, and we're talking about this wait-and-see mindset when both you and I know what's gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
So the comment of that is, if you don't mind, I can comment on, I mean, I, you know, I have no problem, you know, acknowledging that values are gonna roughly stay the same um and potentially go up. My comment is the piece of it going down. The way Prop two and a half works is it never took into account that values could drop. And in Western Mass, the Western Mass phenomenon, we're the only part of the state where values have dropped. And then we've had to make budgetary decisions, which would be eliminating vacancies, doing budget cuts, doing service cuts, all the ugly stuff we had to do in two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen. That's all, that was the result of it. And now if we want smaller government, that's a different conversation. Everything I'm hearing, we want more services, more raises, more everything, and we gotta, we gotta pay for that. And so that's where the trade-off, and I think Council Whitfield's the one that always talks about, you know, making decisions now to save the taxpayers. And we're just in a conundrum where we wanna do more as a city and provide more services, but we don't have, we're not always gonna have the revenue to pay for it. That's my point.
Okay, uh, Counselor Hurst, thank you, T J. Counselor Hurst, you still have the floor. Are you all set?
I was, I was gonna, I was gonna wrap up with something, but um, but I I I think you you made me lost, lose my train of thought. Um, so I'll, so I'll yield, but uh, but thank you. Um, I appreciate it. I get it, T J. Uh, I still don't know if we're doing enough based off of your assumptions. And I feel like we, that was what I was gonna say. I feel like we have enough in reserves to cover a year um if something ha- ha- happens. Uh, so that, those are just my final thoughts. Um, and, you know, my hope is that we can give the uh taxpayers more relief now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Justin, and Counselor Hurst. Um, I see three people in the uh, in the queue. I know Victor and Tracy were there. I don't know who went, who was first, but um, does anybody know?
Hey, Victor.
Victor was, okay, thanks. Uh, Counselor Davila, you're up.
Thank you, our Counselor, uh, Allen. Uh, I um, I took a question. Is it too late uh in the budget process, uh, or can we adjust the budget to reflect the budget for the Police Commission at this point?
Um, the difficult part I have about adjusting the budget with the Police Commission is I have no idea what they're even gonna be asking for. I know what um Counselor Hurst suggested in Monday's meeting. Um, and those comments weren't lost to me about, you know, talking to the board of Police Commissioners and maybe the overseer as well. I have no problem doing that. I just, I I just don't even have, I don't even have a starting point. This is um, you know, one of those zero-based budgeting where it's gonna be showing what you want, and let's see what we can do right now immediately, and what do we do over the course of the next few months and or next year.
Right, um, I I get that. Um, I know this is more of a headache. Uh, at this point, we already got two, two and a half, two, two and a half weeks or so. Uh, but I would encourage you, because I I, T J, I I am very troubled. The Police Commission has been created for now, what, going to three years? And they yet to have a budget. I know I've spoken before. Uh, when I was the chairman of the police, of the Public Safety, I brought it up along with many other concerns that I have. Uh, I remain deeply concerned with the Police Commission. Uh, and so I will encourage you uh to see if that can be done. Uh, and moving on to my other uh point, T J, I listened to the discussion uh with regards to um the budget itself. If we try to shrink the budget, that money that extra, can that be put over to uh property taxes?
Yes.
So I I know that, I believe I asked Lindsay offline while, uh, Lindsay, correct, if I'm mistaken, uh, with those positions that are the main uh open. I think uh just like one million dollar built into the budget to reflect that. Uh, is that correct?
So we have a lost time calculation of one point two million dollars for the salary savings that it takes from when somebody leaves by resignation or or retirement um to fill the positions. We have built in every vacancy that we believe that the departments need to provide this level of service uh as it stands now. And I know there's been talk of of eliminating vacancies. And I've gone through every single vacancy, you know, at Ozzy and trying to figure out which ones we can eliminate. And we've eliminated a number of them um that we've collaborated with the departments or reorganized departments in order to um align them with the positions they need better suiting their, their, their mission. Um, and so I would argue all the vacancies we put in there are the ones that we would argue that are necessary for the city to provide the services we're looking to provide.
So.
So I will, I, if I, if I, uh, because I, if I could just close with this statement, I, I get it, Tim. Uh, I would encourage you, however, I think we have like hundred and fifty vacancies. And I think that's, I know that's a moving number every day. Uh, and I know most of them are police and fire. I would encourage you guys to look outside of fire, outside of police, what we can realistically eliminate so that we can put in turn, put that money into property tax. Uh, to think outside of the box.
We've already done that. As the analysts, my analysts do throughout uh February, March, April, and May. That is what we look at to, so we know how we build the budget. So I would argue we've done our work on it, and that, and I've already gotten yelled at by departments for cutting positions and salaries and, you know, making them, they can't go anywhere. So I've done all this work. So tell me where to go. Tell me where to go.
No. I, my, my humble, my humble suggestion, I know you don't, if I finish the ten seconds. I I know you don't, this T J, but I would, we encourage you, this is, it's a moving number. To take a second, though, just for the benefit of the doubt, I know you've done it. But uh, we're really trying to to get some more relief because we're hearing this on the streets from people, from the, of. And as you can see here, there's a number of councils are uh as well, as I know the administration is deeply concerned with this. But T J, like always, I do thank you for your, for your work, sir. Uh, thank you, uh, T J. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Counselor Davila. Uh, we have, so it's two forty-five. We have two people that need to leave in fifteen minutes. I believe it's Counselor Govan and Counselor Walsh. Uh, some of us may continue on, but just giving a time check, and I, the next person in the queue is Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I too gotta leave at three. So, T J, I just wanted to ask you a question. How is it that we need all of this reserves for contingency when we're going into a recession, when values are gonna drop? So I get like a conflicting picture of like, values are gonna go up, but we're going into a recession, and that's not normally how it works. So we have to put reserves for contingency into this account for the rainy day. But if we're going into a recession, the values are um, they normally go down in a recession. So um, it seems like that would be the natural progression of things. So, and these are just comments, not anything for you to um respond to. So that just doesn't seem like it's the right statement.
So, Counselor, I guess comment on that just real, because I.
And, but when we're gonna talk about this order thing that Tim wants to impose, you interjected on me the last time. Um, you could go ahead and uh and comment, T J, because I wanna hear what you gotta say. But, you know, if we're gonna really do order, let's do it for everybody. If we're gonna stop people from talking, let's do it for everybody. And I just want, that's not directed towards you, um, T J, but go ahead, please.
No, I don't think it, I just, you've raised this a couple of times, and just the concept of the way the reserves work is when the values go down and the tax bills and the tax base goes down, we wanna have that, the reserves there as a way to offset any budget cuts so we can provide the same level of service without having any of that. So we didn't have reserves last time, so we had to do those budget cuts that we didn't wanna do. We have reserves this time, and that's so, you know, I'm ho- hopeful that if recession hits, bills will go down naturally, because as you mentioned, that's what happens. But then I'll have revenue to actually offset that loss.
Yeah, and I I do understand that, but we also have a healthy reserves. The mayor's always tellt, touting um publicly how healthy our financial situation is right now. We have about six percent in reserves. We only need five. And all I was asking is, can we do a little bit more, maybe increase reserves to seven percent instead of the eight percent that it would be at? Like, let's consider like what we really, really truly can do um for our constituents, um, T J. And then I think I had my points all lined up until I got cut off. No, I got an old age brain. Um, so I forgot. So um, I just wanted to say, um, really, really, really consider the Police Commission because it is the law, like, it's the law that we have to follow. So I hope um that you could talk to Norman sooner than later and try to get some numbers together and be able to present it to us um next week. But that's it. Thank you, T J.
Are you all set, Counselor Whitfield?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, back in the queue, Counselor Govan, followed by Counselor Hurst, and followed by Counselor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so, T J, I have a question regarding the possibility going in the future. Again, I said, you know, this year we're done, and I know I've been talking about it since day one. But in the future going forward, what would you think about having um kind of like a percentage of the free cash go straight back to the uh property taxpayers um on a regular basis, right? Because if this, this is, since I've been on the, the two years in a row, the um, the property tax, I mean, the um free cash hasn't gone back to the taxpayers, right? And we've had to fight for every bit of it that has gone to them. Um, so what do you think about something like that?
I mean, I'd happy to set up a a group and actually take a a deep dive into looking at it and seeing if there's something meaningful that we can craft that suits the needs of the residents, the council, and then just sets us up for long-term financial health. I I have no problem taking a look at that. In fact, I think that part of my job as CFO is to look at ideas like that.
Okay, okay, great. So I, that's my idea. I'll talk to you about it. I think it's something that we should do, like I said, you know, for this year and for the last year. Of course, you can't go back and do anything different. Um, but I do, you know, appreciate what has been attempted to be done. Um, but again, I just feel like we could do more. So um, going forward, that's what we need to do. And again, reiterating, the Police Commission has to be funded. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Govan. Moving along to Counselor Hurst.
Counselor Hurst. Sorry, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just a quick question, T J. What, um, why am I mis- uh, misremembering the investment that you all put into um, or the money that you put into an investment that is yielding like two million dollars a year? What, what, where did that come from? What is it? Can you just explain that to me again?
Yeah, so that we have, so we have forty-five million dollars just sitting in a regular bank account yielding, I'm gonna say, two percent interest, maybe even less. Uh, the treasury notes became uh an attractive investment around December, October, November, December, where as the um Fed was raising the interest rates, it was also raising the interest that they were paying on treasury notes to make them an attractive investment. So when Steve Lomnigan was coming back, I called him and said, Steve, I got at that time about forty-five million in um reserves just sitting in a, in a simple bit interest-bearing account. I wanna buy treasury notes with that and then get, make the money off that. So we bought treasury notes. Uh, we, we sit on them for eleven months, and then the government's gonna give us two million, thirty thousand dollars uh for letting us, letting them use our money.
So where does, where does that factor into the reserves? Does that impact the reserves in any, any way as we're try, trying to meet this seven percent mark? Or is that include, when we talk about the reserves, we're talking about that money included in it, in it as well, correct?
Correct. So it's a safe investment, you know, we we strive for safety, liquidity, yield, which means the investment's gotta be as safe as you can be, the money's gotta be liquid in case you need it quickly, and then yield is the, you know, the percent return on investment. And this is probably one of those um smartest investments we can do because it's yielding five percent or more in our investment, and it's just making more money for us uh as we purchase the t- the treasury bonds.
No, I agree. Makes perfect sense. Um, and so that two million that comes out, that money is going where? Back to free cash or?
Oh, stays in, it's gonna stay in the stabilization reserve account uh until we bring in order to you for setting the tax rate, moving the two million uh on top of the five million um to offset the tax rate.
Oh, I see. That, that, that two million is not coming from the free cash that we have available now, is what you're saying. I got it, I got it, I got it, I got it.
So, if I, sorry, sorry, I should play it out one more, one more step. So if we move the seventeen into stabilization reserve, we can then invest that seventeen into the same and yield a little bit more. Now, it may not be available for November, but it's that, we wanna ladder our investments to take advantage until the rates aren't favorable anymore. At least that's my strategy anyway.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, makes sense. Um, okay, all right, that uh, that helps clarify, um, that helps clarify a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Uh, moving to Counselor, uh, President, Counselor Letterman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three, three things. Um, the first is, is more of a comment, but I, you know, I certainly agree uh with ensuring that the Police Commission is properly resourced and has access through a budget. Um, but, you know, I said this at the D O J last night, and I just, you know, I'll say it for the record here. Um, the fact that the Police Commission is not funded is not the direct cause of the fact that it is uh not doing what it needs to. It's just another symptom of the fact that it is not being properly administered. The second thing that I wanted to say uh is relative to uh the home rule petition, T J, that uh you had brought to the council uh following some discussion around uh the tax rate last year. And and this is something that I think came out of the council's debate, um, which was be able to provide some targeted relief uh to the homeowners who need it the most. Uh, not to say that I'm opposed to further tax relief across the board. Uh, but one of the concerns that I, you know, have had, and I know others have had, is uh certainly we worry about many of the corporate landlords just taking that tax break and running with it, um, not passing it on to the renters. And then we also know we have some homeowners who are more in need. Uh, and so my question is, what's the status of that uh and where, where are we headed in that regard?
So the language is, a version of the language has been drafted and shared with the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue has commented, and they're nervous about setting up, you know, something related to taxes. So Patrick Greenhall and the board are kinda still studying um language and other options that we might have. And then this, my hope was to tie a couple million of MGM revenue every year to tax, targeted tax relief, and we can't get access to that funding right at this second. But um just to have that as a, as a kinda another way to help our taxpayers. And um I'm hoping that we get more information from D O R and the board, and then we can get some traction, but that's where we're at.
Okay, um, and maybe we can talk a little bit more about that when we get to the casino piece, if we get there today. Um, my final piece is just administratively, Mr. Chair. Um, the free cash items, they are on the agenda for our first budget meeting on Tuesday. Um, however, technically speaking, the very first item, the seventeen point five million transfer, was formally referred to this committee. And so if counselors wanna be able to discuss that further at the meeting on the twentieth, we'll need a a vote to send it back to the full body. You don't have to make a particular recommendation, but you do have to vote to refer it back uh to the full body in order for us to discuss it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Is that just for the seventeen million?
Correct. All items, all of the other items were just continued by nature of the fact that we uh hit the ten o'clock mark. But that particular item, if you'll recall, we took an actual vote to refer it to committee.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, um, two fifty-six. Uh, I don't see, oh, no, I'm sorry, there aren't still hands in the queue. Um.
Why can't, can you make a motion to refer that back to the full committee?
I was gonna make the motion. I was gonna wait till.
Catering, I'm not sure you can, because you're not a member of the committee.
I was, I was gonna make that motion, um, Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, Catering, for the thought. But yeah, Zeta has made a motion. I second it. All in favor, and the people who can vote are Tracy, Zeta, Jessie, and myself. All in favor of Zeta's motion to refer it back to the full council. Say hi. Hi, hi, hi. All right, great. Uh, we've done that piece of business. That's good. Thanks, uh, Council President, for uh, for letting us, reminding us of that. Um, so in the queue is still Zeta. Are you, do you have something else, Zeta?
I just wanted to make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no one else in the queue. Um, we have two or three people leaving at three o'clock. Um, we've done pretty well, I'd say, in terms of getting through this and having a good discussion. Um, I'm, you know, we had an agenda with Casino, and our ca- cannabis was item five, and and Casino was item six. Uh, if there's no other comments on the first four items, um, and we refer it back to committee, I'm willing to keep the meeting going for a little while. Uh, but I don't want to have a discussion that doesn't include people who wouldn't want to be part of that discussion, so. Um, any comments, anybody have a preference on that? Do we need to resolve the cannabis and casino thing before Tuesday? We know that we need to resolve it, because it's been, it's been kind of a bugaboo that we haven't gotten to, but what's the, what's its impact on Tuesday's votes? Anybody have a comment on that?
Mr. Chair, from my perspective, uh, from the administration perspective. Either of those can be put off into a conversation to a July meeting, um, we know there's legislation pending. Uh, to allow us access to marijuana and opioid and uh MGM revenue, um, I don't think they're entirely. Needed to be resolved for Tuesday, but I know there may be questions.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I actually have uh maybe twenty minutes more, I just, my client just um delayed.
Okay, thank you, um, Council Whitfield, do you have a comment on it? I do have, I know you, I appreciate you.
Think it affect Tuesday's vote, that's all I was gonna say.
No, I don't think it will.
Um, and I do have to drop, so if you guys continue on, good luck with that conversation, I'll just look at the video, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your help, um, Council Whitfield, excuse me, Council Walsh, and you are also leaving, right? You already left, it looks like, um, all right, so um TJ, how about if we do this, how about if you did describe? That, you know, what you just said about the legislature and stuff, could you just go item, but you know, one by one, the cannabis? What the lay, what the problem is with the cannabis thing, we're not gonna resolve it in this meeting, but we might be able to at least get a clarity, what exactly the issue is. Um, because I know that's been a puzzle for for us, so um, could you, could you just describe it one more time, so we at least accomplish that in the meeting? And um, and, you know, we go another ten minutes or fifteen, something like that.
So, um, right now, Mass General Law Chapter Forty-four uh does not allow the city to set up an account. For anything designated for a specific purpose, by that I mean MGM revenue, opioid revenue. And potentially marijuana host community revenue uh as well, and. Under Governor Baker, they tried to amend the language to allow cities and towns to set up special funds that are dedicated for the stated purpose. And read the host community agreement for MGM, it says stated purposes, you know, education, libraries, economic development, you know, all sorts of things that are catch-all. And that money's just been accruing that we're not allowed to touch per DOR's rules and laws. Um, same thing with the opioid money, we're getting settlement money from the Attorney General and uh now governor, which she was able to secure for most cities and towns, almost all of them. Are getting opioid settlement money, we are told we cannot use that money for the purposes as intended uh in the settlement. Because the law did not keep up with the, what's happening. Uh, so we've, we've petitioned the legislature uh numerous times to pass it through supplemental budgets, pass it through. Uh, amendments to the actual budget, uh, we have Senator Libiara file an amendment on our behalf. Uh, he withdrew it because they told him uh that they were gonna take it up to a supplemental budget that's gonna be moving sometime soon, so. Um, so we're hopeful that language passes, once that language passes, it allows us to set up an account. Um, that this money goes right into for the stated purpose, right now, all that money is technically supposed to go to the general fund. And flow through that key uh free cash process, so imagine the twelve million plus the, you know, two or three million. We're gonna have from, or I guess it's seven or eight over the course of the next fifteen years of opioid money. Now flowing to that process, but then we as a administration and a council have to appropriate that. For the stated purposes, and what if we have a similar what we're having today, a disagreement on what those purposes are, so what we want to do is. Have it set up where we have the MGM host community money, the opioid money, and then. The marijuana one's even more murkier and muddy, muddier than uh just what I told you about this law, because the laws have changed on that one, so. I'll stop there as kind of the overarching explanation, uh, knowing we need a legislative fix, and once we get that, we'll be in pretty good shape.
And TJ, thank you, would that legislative fix potentially answer the questions in both categories, cannabis and casino?
It'll solve it for cannabis, casino and opioids, and we're the only ones with the casino piece, everyone else is just cannabis. If they're, if they host a, host a cannabis or, and opioids for everyone.
Right, and that legislation, um, where does it stand in the legislature, do you know?
Uh, it's been filed uh twice by Governor Baker, once by uh Governor Healy, the House and Senate did not take it up in the supplemental budget. Uh, their first one that they did last November, uh, and it's supposed to be in one of the ones that are closing out fiscal year. Uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, hopefully, we're hopeful that's the case.
Okay, thank you, I see two hands in the, two uh hands in the queue, in the order, which I just seen them in this order, Jesse and Zeta, I don't know who was first. Uh, but why don't we go with Jesse first, he's.
Oh, I'll, with Zeta, Tim, because she might have to jump off.
All right, great, thank you, Jesse, um, Zeta, you have the floor.
Yeah, I wanted to know, um, how much, um, MGM money is just sitting there, you said, um?
Let me help me out with the twelve and a half right now.
Yeah, just over, just over twelve million.
Okay, and what about the cannabis money?
One point eight, and what's in my head as, oh no, cannabis, sorry, uh, Liz, do you know what we have in the cannabis money?
Yeah, but um, the cannabis money doesn't go to a separate account outside of the stabilization fund that the ca- city councillor or the neighbor, neighborhood stabilization fund that councillor set up, the rest of it is just general fund money.
Okay, do you know how much is in there, because you said, he said we can't use it at all, right now?
Yeah, um, that, so there's a couple things going on, um. This relates to any funding that was agreed upon as part of the HCA, so as far as cannabis goes, there are small grants. That are small quote-unquote donations that depending on the um host community agreement was set up, so we're talking about like. A, a ten thousand dollar donation to the police department from NSA every year. Which we used to put in a separate donations account outside of the general fund, and now we're putting that directly into the general fund. It's still going to the police department donation account, but it's within the general fund, so we're not talking about like two and a half million dollars a year or anything like we are with MGM. Or seven million dollars over fifteen years like we are with opioids, for cannabis, this issue is a little bit smaller.
Hmm, okay, but, so we're not using that money even though it's going into those accounts?
For the cannabis, we are, because they're such small accounts, we're talking about like a ten thousand dollar grant, a fifteen thousand dollar donation to the school department, those are going directly into the general fund. For the school department's use or for the police department's use.
Okay, so I guess I'm just a little confused, because I thought that because of the, the laws, we weren't able to use the cannabis tax money.
That's incorrect, um, the money that we're getting as part of the local option that comes directly from the state. That is the money that's split up between the general fund and the account that the city council set up.
Uh, so, but let me add to that, so, uh, Lindsay's mostly right, and I'm probably partly wrong. Uh, there is a uh portion of mitigation money that that is supposed to be, be part of those community of mitigating the uh impact of hosting these.
Right.
Our change, and the Cannabis Control Commission changed the law, so instead of them just paying us, and then us telling them how we're impacted. Uh, they changed the law saying that we may have to pay them back if there's no, no uh impact, now. They have stopped paying the, that little piece of it, because uh we've had no real impact, you know, we haven't had to hire more uh police. There's some cost, there's not, I'm not gonna say it's not a cost to having um marijuana dispensaries in Springfield, but the. So across the Commonwealth, you'll see a lot of them are not paying that other piece of the fee. Uh, to us, because there is no impact, and that's, so Lindsay's got her piece a hundred percent right. I may have misspoken about the general fund piece, but the murky part of the marijuana is. Um, what do we do as a policy, and how do we show the cost of hosting multiple marijuana dispensaries, if that makes any sense?
And just to one thing to add to that, and I'm sorry to jump in again, um, so I would say that that is the second piece, and this is a different law we're talking about, and this is the fact that. If you all remember when you did approve the HCAs for the host community agreements for um. The marijuana dispensaries, there was a three percent local option that is paid through the state, that is fine. There's another three percent mitigation that is paid directly to the city, that is what TJ's talking about, that the law changed. And now, rather than just an agreed-upon percentage for the dispensary to pay directly to the city due to the HCA. The law changed, said, no, 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 you can't do that, you need to prove there's some kind of adverse effects, and you need to prove the cost to mitigate that, so. That's the change, there was more money that we thought we would have coming in from these HCAs, that now, because of that law change, we don't expect that money to come in anymore.
So, so mitigation only includes currently and not past, um. Offenses that have been made because of the, you know, history of the, the drug, the war on drugs, especially in our communities of color. They're not taking that into consideration?
Not part of that piece of the law, no, my understanding that's. Part of what the stabilization fund that's been created is gonna try to address through the language of the.
Neighborhood, right, okay, and then the opiate um settlement money, how much is that?
Oh wow, I think it one point eight million available in that, that we can appropriate, maybe it's a little higher now, Lindsay, but that we're about to get, I think, seven to ten million over the next fifteen years. And that's not including our own um lawsuit against Big Pharma, which we, we currently are still active in.
Okay, and what are we supposed to do with that money, and then you said it's not available?
It's not available, but we did appropriate the fund, so you may recall the uh. Fire Department expanded their um unit to do their uh. For drawing a blank on the name of their.
Attack unit.
Attack unit, sorry, to, to be full-time and deploy them where the most opioid overdoses and action is happening, uh, so we added eight um. Promotions to that to allow, allow us to get going on it, the police department put Narcan, extra Narcan and defibrillators in police cars. Uh, health department's buying another van to help transport, so we didn't want to wait. So we made that announcement and commitment before we realized the law didn't keep up, so we didn't for that.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I might have to drop off in five minutes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Govan, thanks for your help, um, okay, we are closing in on the end of this time, we're kind of trying to go to like three fifteen, I see. Council Letterman is in the queue, he's the only one I see, so President Letterman, why don't you uh take the floor?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify on the um availability of, of the money from cannabis, I mean, I, I think TJ's basically covered it, but. The, the only money that is tied up and being challenged is the HCA money, so the money from the local options tax of three percent. Correct, TJ, none of that is an issue, sixty-six percent of it is just in the general fund, and thirty-three percent of it is in a reserve account that the council created. Um, but there, there's no issue with sending, spending that, correct, TJ, that's, it just needs, we need to figure out a process and appropriate it. Um, but we're not, that's not being challenged, that money is available, and earmarked specifically for um mitigation of historical impacts. Um, I recently, um, you know, have been looking at the uh prospect of uh bringing a direct role for the public into that through participatory budgeting. Um, and that's certainly something we can discuss later, but um in general, that money is not tied up, I just wanted to clarify, it's separate from the HCA. And I think it would be okay to see an analysis on the sixty-six percent, um, its impact on the general fund. Um, because it is a, you know, at this, now that they're up and running, we're seeing some, some significant revenue from it, uh, so that would be, I think folks might benefit from that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I can tell you in fiscal twenty-three, the revenue is over a million dollars from that sixty-six percent that comes into the general fund of the local option.
Okay, thank you, does that, um, was that enough of a discussion on cannabis and casino for this meeting? Been pretty informative, I think, from.
Mm-hmm, thank you very much.
Um, from uh TJ and Lindsay and Jesse supplementing with what he knows. Um, all right, so I think we're rounding towards the end here, is there anybody who has any comments? That they haven't had a chance to make, I see two people are on that, that never, I don't think spoke, so I'm just gonna ask you, it's Kirsty Nolli, did you have anything you wanted to make sure we covered here?
No, Tim, I was just listening in wonderfully, uh, just to check in.
All right, great, thank you, um, and uh is it Ciara Hanlon, Ciara from the finance team, is there any questions you have with what we've talked about?
No, I had no questions, thank you.
All right, thank you, I, I think everyone else spoke, uh, as I'm looking at who was on the meeting, so, I'm about to close, and any final comments? Well, thanks, everybody, uh, we got a lot done, I think, um, and I appreciate um what we're able to get done in an hour and fifteen minutes, so. Thanks for all the information and thanks for uh the positivity, and uh we'll see you on Tuesday.